Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. And let's call the meeting of Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present and accounted for. And tonight, the legislative invocation will be given by Zeb Hill. Can I call you Zeb? Great, thanks. And let me tell you a little bit about him first. Pastor Zebulon, Zeb Hill, is the campus pastor at The Rock Church, El Cajon Campus. Zeb has been at the campus for about 11 years now. He provides oversight for the multi-site campus. Zeb earned his Bachelor of Science degree in business management with honors. Congratulations. Zeb's passion for community outreach and spiritual growth has led him to dedicate the past decade to serving as a minister. He offers guidance, support, and encouragement to individuals seeking faith-based connections and personal transformation. His ministry background reflects a steadfast commitment to fostering a sense of belonging and purpose within diverse communities. Appreciate that. So, thanks for being here tonight, Zeb. Please pray for our country tonight, and our state, and of course, the great city of Santee. And tonight, the, um, the, let's see, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by, how about our city manager, Marlene Best? Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, and all the city council here at this beautiful, wonderful city. As I was praying about what I wanted to say, I felt like the Lord wanted me to tell you all, and even in this room, that Santee is a city of refuge. And that, in Nahum 1:7, it says, "The Lord is good, a refuge in times of trouble. He cares for those who trust in Him." And I feel like this city is a place where people find a safe haven, a place of safety. And so, I just want to encourage you with that, all of you. Thank you for your service to this city, and I'll pray. Lord, I pray for this wonderful, wonderful country, this state, and this city. Lord, I thank you for every city council member, everyone in this room. I pray blessings over every single one of them. Thank you, God, for the countless hours of putting in work to make sure this city is just that, a city of refuge, a safe haven, a place of safety. And so, Lord, I thank you for this time, bless this meeting, bless the conversation, and every word that is spoken. We thank you, and we praise you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in honoring our country by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, that takes us to our calendar. Any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the consent calendar? Ron?
No.
Laura?
No.
No, sir.
No, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have speaker on 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
1, 2, 3, 4, and 5?
Yes, sir.
Missed a couple, I guess. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion approved.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Please call the speakers.
Truth, for item 1.
Only item 1, because there's going to be a lot of people coming up. All right, hey, again, everybody. It's Truth, and I'm ready to drop some, here we go, Truth bombs right here. Okay. All right, last meeting, when I happily talked about this same item, passing ordinance and resolutions by only reading the title and zero of their contents before passing them, I started out copying a line from John about saying, "How's some people try to make me seem like the bad guy, but it's the state and federal government's fault." And then, I ended the speech by saying, "As head it being the sideline sitter, we actively choose to be the good guy in the story." I was bringing the hidden story full circle. It's the same concept as rather than taking the fastest streamlined route that's more comfortable and makes people feel good instead of being educated, such as not reading short summaries of every ordinance and resolution before they pass. My double meaning point was, instead of putting blame on others, one has to actively choose the more difficult path in order to do the right thing, even when it brings naysayers and opposition, political support waivers, and more time is taken up in a meeting, even though time is indeed a precious commodity, unrenewable. But transparency of information is also crucial and is missing in so many places of government today. Luckily, not too much here at this city council, I'm happy to report. But of course, I'm trying to ensure that it stays that way by insisting on at least some of every ordinance and resolution being described, because title alone can be very deceptive. If I give an example, I would name the Whistleblower Protection Act. It sounded so good, but more whistleblowers have been targeted by the federal government ever since its passage. So, even if all of you council members are just pure-hearted angels, and they might be, there could be a day, could be, where one of you, or maybe a future council, decides they will pass something in the consent calendar that has a really nice sounding title, but is actually nefarious in its contents. That's what should be prevented as a possibility with my solution of reading a short summary of every ordinance and resolution. It's full public business, so provide a full public knowledge is my argument. Thank you.
Motion approved, item number 1.
Second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 2, please.
Truth.
Okay, the payment of demands. It's actually one of my favorite ones, even though I hate looking at numbers. The Ms. Santee pageant only cost about $322, and I want to know, how is that possible? Because that's such a low number. I'm wondering if the sashes and the crowns were hand-drawn, like my number-one participant ribbon. There you go. I made that for a different city council. I might as well put it to use. There was a Santee TV ad on KSON for $3,000. But that may sound horrible, but I do know that radio airtime ain't cheap. Over $38,500 was once again wasted on the multiple-species conservation plan to help the county toward their goal of land monopoly. I'm sure next week, I'll hear about more hundreds of acres of land taken up with the people's money at the next county meeting. That's the thing with these programs, once you're hooked, you're crooked. Well, somebody makes off with the check like a butterfly on conserved land, flying away, you know. And, you know, John, I looked for that article you mentioned from the San Diego Union Tribune about the city of Santee being the most transparent government in the county, but unfortunately, I couldn't find it. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I just couldn't find it. But overall, I did want everybody to know that, yes, I very much appreciate the transparency of the spending, that's why I read it. It's true that other city councils don't list their spending with such details. So, good work to Heather. I do see your name, you know. Thank you.
Is that it?
Motion approved, item number 2.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 3.
Truth.
All right. Item 3, we have over $192 per house around Casa Court, uh, what am I going to say, $192 in taxes, levies, to cover stormwater improvements. That's a 7.3% increase in price. Community facility districts function as many corporations to facilitate check collection for public services. Property owners within the district are lucky enough to get to pay every increasing taxes or levies to cover these services. And that's because no government has any money until we give it to them. You have to remember that nothing's free, so if you want the services, you got to pay the toll. That's it for number 3.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item number 3.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 4.
Truth.
All right, item 4, we have about $1,300 for each home and a levy for the Western Development for various public improvements and debt service. For the public's knowledge, here's some information I found from a June 23rd, 2022 San Diego County grand jury report entitled, "Community Facilities Districts: The Misunderstood and Sometimes Hidden Use of Mellow Roost Taxes Across San Diego County." Quote, "The state legislator in 1982 passed the Mellow Roost Community Facilities Act. This act allows local governments to create special taxing districts to collect public funding that was lost due to Proposition 13 limitations on property tax collection. Unfortunately, transparency, accountability, and oversight of this process is not easily accessible or meaningful to the prospective homeowner. A grand jury recommends that action be taken to build meaningful transparency and oversight into the CFD process. For example, in the Ladera Ranch neighborhood in Orange County, a lack of oversight resulted in mellow roost taxes being collected after the bonds in the district had been paid off. The County of Orange was forced to issue refunds to homeowners who had no idea what was happening. Rules regarding the operation of the CFD are created at the onset of the district. Bond terms can vary from 20 to 50 years. A homeowner who purchases a new home may be on the hook for a payment that lasts for a lifetime. The second type of CFD is service-based, and that's what we're talking about today. Homeowners within the district pay for ongoing services within their district, and services might include building maintenance, fire protection, ambulance services, park maintenance, police, road maintenance, and school maintenance. This tax amount will change as the cost of completing the service goes higher over time. A notice of special tax must be made available to anyone subject to a special tax levied by the local agency within five days of the request. Homeowners need to be educated concerning these potential special tax surprises." End quote. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item number 4.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously. And 5, truth.
All right, and the last levy we have in the consent is about $356 per unit for the Western Development to meet the incremental cost of public services. And see, they were honest. That's what it's about. It's another 7.3% increase, and I'm wondering, is that the inflationary rate? One of these days, we're going to have a very clear answer on what it is. Although, I will tell people, I'll give them a hint, it's always going up. There you go. You're never going to know. So, I really just read these various levy tax amounts just to have it be overtly in the public record instead of buried in a consent calendar, because it'd be just like ordinance and resolutions passed by title only. So, there, just like a bunch of different delicious slices of pizza coming together for a whole pie, I brought my consent comments to a full-circle completion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item number 5.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to non-agenda public comment. Speaker's lips?
I have one speaker, sir. Truth.
All right, last meeting, the proclamation where John wanted to complain instead of proclaim, that's because for a second there, you were the mayor of the city of San Diego, so there's much to complain about, it was totally understandable. And Ron, you were right about the encampment issue. San Diego's ban will result in more homeless people coming out east, and that's actually what I told their city council last month, but you know, they know what they're doing. Now, last meeting, Speaker Brendan Thomas had the idea of a local radio station. Of course, Santee was formerly the home to KCBCQ, so it can be done again. I thought Brendan's idea of airing city council meetings and other information was ingenious, and this is me going out on a limb here, but I'm just going to put it out there that I do have some experience in radio, being a recurring guest, and even trying to get sponsors, so I'm actually the most qualified here to be on the air, or to help other people with programming and marketing ideas, so I don't know if anybody even cares, but if anyone's curious or has questions, you can ask me next time you see me. I tried to say something because I got literally nudged about it. Now, totally different topic, someone told me Carl DeMayo is giving a certain council member a little trouble. Somebody didn't listen when I mentioned El Cajon's failed attempt at a sales tax increase. At an El Cajon City Council meeting, I heard Michelle mention how a certain so-called Republican type had shot down their plan right at the start. History repeats itself. And lastly, did everyone have a fun 4th of July? Well, it wasn't supposed to be fun, it was supposed to be reflective and educational. The real reason to celebrate was not food and fireworks, it was the Declaration of Independence. Quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, their duty to throw off such government, and you know what, replace it. Absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted. Invasions on the rights of the people. Obstructed administration of justice. New officers, swarms of officers to harass our people. The military independent of and superior to our civil power. A jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws. Imposing taxes on us without our consent. Depriving us in many cases of trial by jury. Abolishing our most valuable laws and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress, answered only by repeated injury. We therefore declare that these united colonies are free and independent states." End quote. And you know, I hope people learn, because I know most people haven't heard the end of that, but what she realizes, we're kind of going through the exact same thing they did before 1776. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 10, which is a public hearing for tentative map, TM 2021-2, and development review permit, DR 2021-4, for an eight-unit planned residential development on a vacant 0.69-acre site located at 8504 Fenita Drive in the medium-density residential R7 Zone, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environment Quality Act.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is a proposed planned residential development consisting of eight units on a .69-acre site. APRD allows multiple-family detached units with a greater flexibility in building siding and setbacks, and allows ownership of both the building and the lot. The project site is located at 8504 Fenita Drive in the medium-density residential zone. The site was previously developed with a 1,200-square-foot single-family home, which was demolished in 2008. Surrounding land uses include multifamily development to the north and south, and single-family homes are located to the west and east. This view is from Fenita Drive looking west, and this view is from Watson Place looking The APRD consists of a 12-lot subdivision with eight residential lots and four lots designated for open space, a private road, a parking area, and a private easement to remain. Two guest parking spaces are required, and two spaces are provided on-site. Up to six on-street guest parking spaces are provided on Watson Place, which is a private street. Vehicle access to the development would be provided from a new 30-foot-wide driveway along Fenita Drive. Drought-tolerant trees and plants would be planted throughout the project site, including the common area and street frontages. Approximately 1,200 square feet of common open space would be provided with amenities including grills, benches, picnic tables, and a totlot. A homeowners association would be required, and the HOA would maintain the totlot, common open space areas, and landscaping. Street improvements would be provided on the west side of Fenita Drive and the south side of Watson Place. Improvements include curb gutter, streetlights, drainage facilities, and pedestrian facilities and landscaping. The width of Watson Place varies as shown on this slide, however, adequate emergency access is provided. The area outlined in blue is the project site, and the area outlined in orange is a portion of the project site that abuts the adjacent single-family homes. That area in orange will be vacated. This area is not subject to any improvements, and access will remain the same. The proposed development consists of two-story buildings with a maximum height of 22 feet. All buildings would be constructed with a combination of siding, stucco finish, and asphalt shingle roofing. Each unit contains a two-car garage. Staff determine that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 32 and fill development Staff regimens that city council conduct and close the public hearing, fine tentative map and development review permit exempt from CEQA, and adopt the tentative map and development review resolutions. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer questions, and the applicant is also here.
Great, thank you. The only speaker's lip is the applicant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, we may not need the applicant to come forward. Applicant, can you raise your hand? Okay, great, thank you very much. Council comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you go back to one of the slides that shows the project site, and then, I guess the homes are south? Not that one. There. So, I don't know if that's north or south. I don't know if Watson is north.
Watson is north of the project site.
Okay. So, the home's south, looks like that's their backyards. What's the distance between those backyard fences and what will be built on the project site?
So, you mean the multifamily development to the south of the project site? So, it's a 10-foot setback requirement?
On both sides? Or is it 10?
It's actually a 10-foot perimeter, so it's, they're going to have 10 feet on the front, the side, and the rear. And then, on Fenita Drive, because it's Mobility Element Street, that's a 25-foot setback.
Okay, so, it's 10 feet from the person's fence?
To the property line.
And then, these are two stories, so they'll be down in their backyard?
Yeah, they're two stories, 22 feet high, and they meet the 10-foot setback requirement.
Are these other ones two stories?
Yes. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Was there a question about the six parking spaces on Watson? It reminds me of our way, what we went through there. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, you said there's, is Watson one of those private, or Watson Place one of those?
It's an easement, yeah, it's an easement. We did send out the courtesy notice, the public notice. We didn't get any comments regarding that.
How many did you send out?
I believe it was 88. And the notices go to the property owners within 300 feet of the site.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I did receive one email regarding the site, and it was from a Ms. Renee Woodward, and she was concerned about the way this looked and how people get back and forth off of Watson Place. And my understanding is, is that there's a revocation of that little tiny strip that we see on the lawn of Watson Place?
Yeah, let me go back.
That.
So, this, yeah, the area.
The orange area. So, that's going to be, what's the word we use?
Vacated?
Vacated, thank you.
Yeah, that will be vacated, and that area is not subject to any improvements, so access will remain the same there.
So, if people have been living there forever, it's going to still look the same as the day they moved in. Well, maybe not. I don't know what it looked like when they moved in. So, I just want to make sure. And that parking that we have indicated along the north curb line there, or south curb line of the north street there of Watson, is not reserved parking? It's going to be public parking, is that correct?
Guest parking for this development?
So, that will be reserved, so that members of the public can't park there?
Um, it's a private street, I mean.
Well, the neighborhood's across the street, could they park there?
Yeah, because it's an easement.
Okay. So, what I'm concerned with is that all this, and sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, but I just thought of it, is that somebody that say that the HOA here believes that that is their reserved parking, and if somebody like from across the street did happen to park there, are they going to call for a tow to have it removed? Yeah, because that actually wouldn't be a lawful tow at that point. So, I just want to make sure that we have that.
Covered.
Yeah, covered. I mean, you see where I'm going with that? How it could be confusing?
Yeah.
So, but personally, I think this is a nice-looking development. I think it's going to clean up that corner quite a bit, so. Any other comments or questions?
I'm going to go off what you said. I think it needs to be in writing, that they don't necessarily own that. Or do they own that, I guess is the question, or is that?
Can't be if it's an easement.
Yeah, it's a shared easement, so they.
I'm booking for it, yeah. So, we need to make sure that that's in any kind of paperwork, so the HOA doesn't get the wind that they can decide, oh, now you're going to, as the mayor said, you know, we've dealt with enough towing companies to just kind of wander through and tow in and head off. And we want to make sure that the HOA doesn't think all of a sudden that that's going to be their property and they can take care of it.
That made me think of something else, though. Let's make sure that we post signs that the RVs don't swoop in and start parking there.
Well, that's a good idea, yeah. Dustin, anything?
Like the motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward. That takes us to item number 11, which is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, P2022-8, for a daycare center at 8549 Fenita Drive, and that's in a medium-density residential area. And also, this is categorically exempt from California Environment Quality Act. Lot going on there. Doug, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay. So, this is a conditional use permit request for a daycare in a single-family residential zone. The conditional use permit is required.
Doug, can you get a little bit closer to the microphone? If they might have to raise the lectern.
Yeah, you're right. Is this better?
No, the lectern.
It's already maxed out.
Might be up all the way, but.
Can you just sit down?
Yeah. Everybody getting, sitting on the back of one of the chairs.
I pulled it up a little bit, maybe Jerry will have to fix it tomorrow.
All right, go ahead, Doug.
So, the conditional use permits required for this use in a single-family residential zone, so that unique impacts of the use on a specific site can be assessed on an individual So, this is the project site. It's located near the southern boundary of the city on Fenita Drive. It's highlighted in yellow. It's a .6-acre property. It has historically functioned as a single-family residence. It's surrounded by detached, single-family development, except for the daycare that operates right to the north, which is highlighted here with the blue outline. And the rear of the property currently serves as the parking. And the rear of the property currently serves as the parking lot for the daycare, for the daycare to the north. So, this is a picture of the front of the property. It's a single-story structure, it's low-pitched roof. There's two curb cuts, but there's no improvements to the front right now. Their proposal would remodel the interior of the structure, but there would be no new habitable space added. So, this is the colored landscape plan. And, you know, the site is here, to the north is the existing daycare. Site improvements include two outdoor play areas, one here, one in the back, landscaping along the parking lot in these two areas, and then also along Fenita Drive, circulation to the south, and then a slight modification of the parking lot to increase the size, and a trash enclosure up here. So, the two sites have the same property owners. The business owner, the proposed business owner runs this business, would also run this business. So, there would be a shared driveway, a shared drive aisle, a shared parking lot and a shared trash enclosure between the two sites. So, we required a parking study to be created for this project that, what they did is, for three days, they went out for three hours and counted cars every 15 minutes to see what the maximum number was in the parking lot. And the maximum they found in the morning was seven, the maximum they found in the evening was six. And based on this, they determined the minimum needed was 15, and this project is providing 19. It's just an exterior elevation, and this is the side. Yeah, we determined this project would not result in a significant impact, and it is exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of CEQA. We recommend you conduct and close the hearing and adopt the conditional use permit and find the project exempt from CEQA. That concludes my staff report.
Doug, when you were talking about the 15 and the 19, was that parking spaces?
Parking spaces.
Great, thanks.
Sorry, did I leave that out?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Okay, we do not have any speaker slips other than the applicant. Is the applicant present? Thank you for being here tonight. Questions from council or comments?
Yeah. I think this is a good use for this site. It's another property on Fenita Drive that's, you know, needs some attention, and I do like the idea of the parking in the back. That helps ease, you know, drop off and pickup. My only concern on the whole thing is putting artificial turf in a play area. It's hot in Santee and artificial turf is hotter than grass, and I don't see a shade structure over it, so to me, that wouldn't be ideal for a child to play on.
Yeah, I would have to defer to like the applicant on that one, I guess.
So, I make a recommendation that we not allow that...
Sure.
Can you kind of come up and we can address that? And please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Agle Afari, and I'm a founder of Bunny Bears Preschools. My background is social psychology and early childhood education, but mostly I'm known as Teacher Agle. Bunny Bears Santee opened its doors in the original property in 2019 when we purchased an existing preschool program that was called Montessori Discovery School. And we received a very warm welcome from the neighborhood. We filled up all 43 spaces in no time and started a waiting list of families waiting. So, we are a research-based program. We play a lot, that means a lot for our young children, and we dance and sing and work with clay and read books and have puppet theater and play in our playground that is very much shaded. And we have a probably 100-year-old cottonwood tree that's there, we call it a grandpa tree, but we also have added shades, if we talk about shades. And here, of course, we would have shades as well, absolutely, yes. And for grass, it's, in our current site, we have real grass. So, here we can have real grass as well. Our children run on the grass as well as, you know, sandy areas and also, it's very nature-inspired. We currently serve children ages 2 to 5 and offer part-time and full-time programs, but majority of our families are full-time working families, so most of our children attend full-time programs. We are open 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but the drop-offs are very scattered and so are the pickups. We are a community-based school. We believe that children are valuable members of our community and they belong in our safe, home-like neighborhoods. So, I think this is a great fit for the community, high-quality childcare is in high demand. And so, with this expansion, we will add 43 spaces that will be new spaces, not only for preschool-aged children, but also for infants and toddlers that are a whole other level of just need that families are looking for. You know, the look of the house will stay the same and will nicely fit in the neighborhood. And we're just looking forward to this expansion and adding new families to our community.
Okay, great. Now, do you want to condition that?
Yeah, I would like to condition that for real grass, and there's a couple reasons why. I actually used to be Boys and Girls Club Director of the One in Santee. And so, before the new club was built, it's new, it's old now, but that's how old I am, before the club was built behind Carl's Jr., I think at the time, and I don't know if they've changed it since, but they put artificial turf along the side, and...
Yeah, I know.
It's really hot.
Yes, we used to have in our old house, and here in, just, we know all about it, so...
Yeah, so, for that reason, it's too hot to play on.
Absolutely.
So, that would be my only...
I'll second your motion.
Rob? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, were you going to make the motion then to accept staff recommendation with the condition that it be real turf versus artificial?
Yes, I will make the recommendation that it be...
Thank you.
Real grass versus artificial turf, but motion to approve with that addendum.
And Ron is the second on that. All right, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 12, which is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023-2024 Santee Roadway Lighting District, SRLD. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight's public hearing are the final steps in the annual assessment process for the roadway lighting district and the landscape maintenance districts. The Santee Roadway Lighting District is made up of two zones, Zone A and Zone B. Zone A funding comes from a portion of the base 1% ad valorem property tax, and Zone B is a special benefit assessment. Zone B proposed increase, proposed assessment will increase from $15 to $16 per household this year. Zone B assessment amount is $411,530, and Zone A projected revenue is $384,100. Staff's recommendation is to conduct and close the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution providing for the FY 2324 Santee Roadway Lighting District Annual Levy of Assessments.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
I think that was a motion to approve staff recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That one.
Great. Is there a second or are there any council comments, questions? Thank you. Please prepare to vote. Sorry, Ron couldn't help myself.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us to item number 13, which is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023-2024 and Santee Landscape Maintenance District, SLMD Annual Levy of Assessments.
The Santee Landscape Maintenance District is comprised of 18 zones, 10 of which are assessed and maintained by the city. The total assessment for the 10 zones is $115,350. Nine of the assessed zones have no change in their assessment amounts this year. The assessment for Zone 1, El Nepal, will increase by 3.5%. That's because in FY 1920, the property's owners voted to increase their assessments in order to replace existing landscaping with drought-tolerant landscaping and to provide for more frequent maintenance. The general fund advanced the cost of replacing the landscaping and is being repaid through the annual assessment. Staff's recommendation is to conduct and close the public hearing and adopt the attached resolutions providing for the FY 2324 Santee Landscape Maintenance District Annual Levy of Assessments.
Thank you. There are no speaker slips.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, please vote.
Yeah, you could hear what I said, yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, we heard what he said.
Fair enough, just didn't understand it. Yeah, got it.
All right, that takes us to item number 14, which is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023-24 Town Center Landscape Maintenance District, TC LMD Annual Levy of Assessment.
The Town Center Landscape Maintenance District is comprised of eight zones. Four zones have historically been assessed and maintained by the city. Zone A, Town Center Parkway, Zone B, the lakes, Zone C, San Remo, Zone D, Mission Creek. Last year, the Magnolia Lakes Homeowners Association requested to take over the maintenance responsibility for Zone B. Zone B was not assessed in the FY 2223 in anticipation of signing a public improvement maintenance agreement with the HOA. However, in April 2023, the city received notification from the HOA board that they declined, they voted to decline the city's maintenance agreement offer. The levy for Zone B will be collected in FY 2324. The total assessment for all zones will be $321,780. And staff recommends that the City Council conduct and close the public hearing and adopt the resolutions providing for the 2324 Town Center Landscape Maintenance District Annual Levy of Assessments.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we go on, is there anybody here from the Magnolia Homeowners Association by chance?
No.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us back to the second part of non-public comments. Any speaker slips?
No speakers, sir.
Okay, no speaker slips. All right, that takes us to City Council reports. Anything from Ron?
No.
Okay, Laura?
Yes, actually, I actually have some very sad news. Chief Butts, the fire chief from Lakeside, shared with me that a member of our SLMSA Board of Commissioners has passed away unexpectedly, so I just wanted to read what he wrote. "It is with a heavy heart that we report the passing of retired Fire Chief Mark Thomas Baker of the Lakeside Fire Protection District. After retirement, he continued his affiliation with the fire service as a member of the Board of Directors of the same district where he was currently serving. Chief Barker went to be with his Lord Jesus Christ on Monday, July 10, 2023, after a brief stay in the hospital related to some heart issues. His celebration of life services will be held as follows. The location is Mission Church of the Nazarene, 4750 Mission Gorge Place, San Diego, and the date is July 15, and then the time is 2 o'clock." And this actually made me smile because Dustin, John and I, you know, are familiar with what he would wear to our meetings. Chief Baker loved his Hawaiian shirts, and it would be an honor if you could wear a Hawaiian shirt or blouse in Chief Baker's memory. But if you don't have a Hawaiian shirt, don't let that stop you from joining us. Fire uniforms are also welcome.
Well, thanks. Appreciate that. Dustin?
On a more positive note, thanks, Laura. I'm teasing. Thank you, actually, I didn't know that, so I'm actually taken back a little bit for a second here. Wanted to let the public know, if they haven't seen yet, our New Hometown Heroes banners are up along the bridge over Santee Lakes there on Mass Boulevard to the extension of the program is continuing to happen. As you drive down either direction, obviously, east or west, going from Western Road to Carlton Hills, you'll see that the banners keep expanding on the streetlights there, and it's pretty cool. At least, I drove the other day, and it just keeps rewarding me as I drive and to see, you know, what we're doing for the veterans, you know, in our community and stuff. And two, actually, I want to give a thanks to our Public Works guys, actually Sheriff's Department, Alpha Project. And you guys know, really Chris Gooden leading this up the last couple of weeks, they have taken out over 220 tons of trash out of the river, out of our homeless encampments in the last couple of weeks by the efforts that the City Council has put together, several areas throughout there. So, thank you to Sheriff's Department for obviously providing the escort, you know, for Alpha Project, and obviously for our Polk Horse guys, the working the tail off to take care of some of the issues that we have throughout the riverbed area and make the city cleaner. So, thank you, Sam, our captain, and thank the Alpha Project, and obviously appropriate time.
Council member, can I amend?
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I really don't have anything. It's early this week. I'm leaving tomorrow for Newport Beach, Lake California Cities Board of Directors meeting, so I may have something for you when I get back, and then I'll be out for about a week on vacation. So, Vice Mayor will be in charge. Anything goes wrong, it's all your fault. So, that's all I have to say. We had a great time at the Santee Salutes, really enjoyed it, and I did enjoy providing a little bit of history at the opening ceremony as to the ringing of the bells and what that meant as far as Liberty Bell being first rung and created by the First Continental Congress and things of that nature. And then, of course, and that was 1774, 1776, it rang in July 8th for the bringing people together to read the Declaration of Independence. So, that was, I enjoy doing that. A lot of people have no idea what the Liberty Bell really signifies. And of course, it last rang in 1848 on George Washington's birthday. They're ringing it, and the bell cracked and got too big to repair, and no more sound would come out of it. So, I did enjoy doing that and talking about it. So, that's all I have. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add my kudos to our staff team for all of the efforts at the Santee Salutes event. The team worked very, very hard for many, many hours, including our Sheriff's Department staff, our fire staff, of course, community services of all divisions. So, we really want to thank you guys for the efforts that you made and for the City Council members who were able to be there and send their goodwill, no matter what. On top of that, we're not resting on our laurels there. There is another concert this Thursday night, like tomorrow, so those that are at home watching on TV, make sure to come on out and enjoy yourselves at our summer concert series at Town Center Community Park starting at 6:30 tomorrow night. Thank you all.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's going to take us to a closed session conference with labor negotiators. And before we do that, I just want to say, I see a lot of firefighters out there from Santee, and I want to thank you for coming out, and I always appreciate your continued support. Close session. Close session.
Let's go ahead and go back on, are we there? All right then, let the record reflect that we are back in open session. And in relation to item number 15, conference with labor negotiators, direction given to the city manager and team, and that adjourns the meeting.